Let us pray. In the precious name of Jesus. Lord, we come to say, Lord, calling upon your holy name. God, as we come before your people, the citizens of this town. God, we ask that you guide our tongues, guide our lips, Lord. Guide our judgments, Lord, for what decisions need to be made. God, we ask that we, as council people, be respectful to the citizens, and we ask that of the citizens to be respectful to the council. And we ask, God, that you let this be an intelligent meeting, a meeting that's of importance, one that can bring some unity, God, as was prayed on earlier for the town of Latah. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Alright, next on the agenda is the vote on the resignation of our two council members, Barbara McIntyre and Joe Wilson Jr.
I'm in commotion that we received the resignations of councilman McIntyre and councilman Wilson.
All the favor, over in the discussion. Next on the vote. Alright, next on the agenda, discussing the town and police department concerns by our administrator, Ms. Melinda Robinson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming, thank you for those that are here. We realize that we do have a lot that has been going on in the town of Latah. We have received several resignations, starting with our town attorney, then in turn several council, two councilmen resigned, and then our local police department. We received their resignations, it was posted why they resigned, some just resigned, police officers have resigned, I have read their resignations, some police officers I have spoken with, I've also spoken with our victim's advocate, Ms. Kathy. And speaking with everyone, I have come to realize that there was a some block of communication. Some did not understand what was going on, some felt they were being looked over, but after communicating with everyone, they see that that was not the case. Everything that has been done, has been done in for the best of all Latah's citizens. It was not for a certain group, it was nothing against the police department. And the resignation of the attorney, I have reached out to her, I have nothing to do with her concerning her resignation. We are saddened by everyone's resignation, but I do realize that everyone has friends with you. And when you make a decision that you desire to leave, then it's up to us to accept it, and that's what we have come to the conclusion to do. We accept the resignations. As far as the police department, if you have any concerns, we have reached out to the sheriff's department, and they have partnered with us. And beginning on August the 5th, they will be filling in the gaps where they are needed. At this time, I have consulted with all of the council, and we have come to the conclusion that we would like to announce that our interim chief will be retired. So if you have any questions or concerns that there is not going to be anyone at the head of the police department, he will be our interim chief. As far as anything else, if you have anyone at the council has anything to say, before they start, I would like to address Facebook. I know that is the elephant in the room. Many have said, "Why has she not said anything? Why has she not commented?" I have said, "Two years ago, when I came to council, I don't do Facebook, I will not go back and forth with any citizen on Facebook. My phone number has always been available. If you do not have my number, you can call town hall, they will give you my number. If you have called or reached out to me, I have called you back, I have returned those calls, anyone that has come to town hall to see me, I have met them there. I am not one that cannot get in touch with you. I am always available, I've always been available when I came on council two years ago, and I'm still that same person. I am not one that's going to try to degrade anybody, I'm not one that's going to try to walk over anyone. And it has been said several times that there is a hidden agenda. There is no hidden agenda. The agenda is that Latah moves forward, and that will move forward together. When I ran, people are talking about what they ran on. My statement was, I did not have a grand saying, my statement was, "Together we can." And I still stand on that today. Together we can. I cannot do anything by myself. I am here to work with the citizens as well as the council. If you need me, call me. If there was a breakdown in communication, I apologize. I would like to say right now to Ms. Kathy, when I spoke with her, she was very open with me, and she said, "Well, Ms. Melinda, when we have meetings, you acknowledge Ms. Sierra, you acknowledge Ms. Rebecca, you acknowledge the police department, and I can be in there and you won't say anything about me." So yes, I felt you had it out for me. And I genuinely did not even think about the fact that she was, felt she was being looked over. That was a breakdown in communication. But when I was able to go and talk to her one-on-one, she was able to give that to me, and I was able to give her an apology, and I'm able to do it openly in front of everyone, because I've never tried to look over anyone. Ms. Kathy is not at every meeting, so I had this little routine where I look and I see, and I did overlook her. And that was on my part, that had nothing to do with Ms. Kathy. Has nothing to do with her job performance. We need a victim's advocate, I myself am a victim's advocate, so anything dealing with advocacy, victims, I am there for them. We are not victims anymore, we are becoming victors. We are going to have victory in this, everything that's going on, we are going to overcome it. I realize we are in a state of change. Change is not easy for everyone, change is not easy for myself, but we have embraced it, and we are going to overcome it. So if you have any questions and if I have not answered them, this will be the time I will open it for the council. If you have anything to say, you may say it at this time.
Pretty much picking back off of what council, I mean, administrator Melinda was talking on, you know, we said to hear about the police department. We've also, you know, was told by some that, you know, that there were some officers that was encouraged to, by, of police officers, that's still their choice. If I decide to leave my job today or tomorrow, I dare not go around to try to tear down my, the place that employs me by encouraging other people to leave for no apparent reason. But at the end of the day, everybody has their own mind, you know, and we're here. As we speak of change, we're talking about change for the better. We're not, as far as Facebook, as she was speaking earlier, I refuse to make any negative comments on Facebook. I listed that the town attorney in the last meeting, and she had concerns about her children, you know, when Mr. Drongon goes live, and calling her name. But we all have children. We all have children. I have adult children that have problems when they look on Facebook and see certain citizens up there calling the council idiots, and stupid, you know. So whereas she won't respect for her children, we would like to say for our kids. I dare not disrespect you or yours, and all we are asking for is the same thing from you guys. And I'm here, you know, I'm hearing all this about voting hawks, you know, and I hear an agenda. Can someone out there that, that is talking about this voting harvesting, can you please explain to me what that is and how does it, how does it work? Because that's all, I mean, on Facebook is what we're just getting is that, you know, voting hawks. And, I mean, now it's time to speak on it. No one, I mean, it's on Facebook.
I'd like to see, please. So I can focus it, and I'm new here, and I don't know really much about it, except that I did see forms where absentee ballots were turned in by the same person, over and over and over and over and over again. And I think that that's concerning. And then when I came in actually to pick up some voter registration forms, I was told I had to go to, to the site myself and print them up myself. So I'm not sure if that's soundless and fair, if that's just what I've seen, would you like to speak to that?
Vote registration is totally different from actually absentee ballot.
Oh, I'm sorry, absentee, that's what I meant, I wanted to pick up absentee ballots.
Okay, so I was never aware that you could go on some site and print off absentee ballot, never have I ever heard that.
That's what.
And that's new to us, and we appreciate you bringing that to us. That's very new to me, that's my first time ever hearing. And the reason I asked the question is because I myself, back in 2014, when the form of government got changed, I myself worked along with Mr. Taylor, you know, doing absentee ballots. And I think, there was like three hundred and twenty-eight people that voted in that, and we, and we did it in a short period of time, is the reason that, so we had a hundred and four absentee ballots then. The same thing that was done for dis election is what we did when Mr. Taylor, myself, and a lot of other citizens, we wanted this form of government change. So, was it harvesting that then, in 2014, or did it just begin, turn into harvesting? It's what I'm trying to put out there to the citizens, what I would like for someone to answer. In all fairness, absentee is absentee. We did it in 2014 to get the form of government change, I worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Taylor.
And so your names are on those ballots, turned in?
Ma'am, if I turn in an absentee ballot, then I have to, yes.
Okay, so that's common practice in mine, for one person, for two people to go out and help these people collect their absentee ballots?
It's for any persons. Was there only two people that, that turned an absentee ballot? I'm sorry, I would say, no ma'am, there is no ma'am. No ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Are you saying that only two people within the town of Latah turned in absentee ballots?
No, no, what I'm saying is you had said you and Mr. Taylor had collected several for.
Not just, not just me and Mr. Taylor, I'm just speaking that we worked together on that project in 2014.
So I guess what I'm asking is the, the thing that seems unusual, is I'm used to not only Latah, I'm used to small towns, I'm from a big city, so it doesn't work the same way. So I saw a list that had name after name of Mrs. Drongon for turning in ballots, and I just wanted to know, was that what you're talking about, that same sort of representation will be on the 2014?
Definitely.
Communication?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's just how Latah does it?
Yes, ma'am. If I'm not mistaken, you know, there are times where I, it's represented heads, there was like nine hundred absentee ballots, I'm sure that there was maybe, you know, if you had nine or ten people working for him, okay, then I'm sure that those nine or ten people's names was, you know, signed to turn in those absentee ballots for the state. So let's, let's, let's look at the whole scenario, let's not just, oh, we're going to pick out dis election. Let's go back to the voter registration, and let's just pull up some elections, you know, and just see. Yes, Jerry?
This is for me, number one, I would love for you to go back to the absentee votes that see where I've been with people at House and House. Number two, if you did choose to go out, and apart absentee votes only happened in town of Latah, and double the change back in 2014, I didn't really do live in this town much. To speak to what we're talking about, I think the two individuals that acquired the most absentee ballots in this past election both lived outside of the town hall. So originally, the person would say, "Why does someone living outside of the town manage, having so much to do with town affairs that don't affect them?" And then when you take in you, look at the comments, and you realize that one of our citizens, who was very respected and prominent in all of our community, states that someone went and took advantage of one of his autistic family members, and had them sign a ballot for our free field office. You know, I don't think I was ever done in 2014, but I should never have heard about anything in eight years. So when you look at the totality of everything going on, I know someone loved and blamed me for everything going on in this town, but I think it's not blaming me, you guys have themselves taken responsibility. That's just like the administrator just said, there was some lack of communication going on. Well, we're setting the law since this administration. Can we figure out that a lack of communication was going on? And if it was just simply communication, I mean, Mary Corrigan, McGurk, the board stated that it was money issues in a prior interview. So it was money issues, but now it's a lack of communication. And during that lack of communication, if anybody asked any of these folks leaving, "Hey, look, now that we're called, is there a chance you might think about what's going on? Is there a chance you might say?" And on that basis, the town is going to be covered by the sheriff's department. I do hear through several of my friends in the county that that's going to come with a price. Do we know at this time how much the sheriff's department costs for that church?
It shouldn't cost us, he's not paying our county taxes as well, Mr. Taylor, as you stated in one of your comments on Facebook. As you stated in one of your comments on Facebook, that it would not cost the county, cost the town anything because we pay county taxes also, right?
I want to answer this back, because if you read the statement again, you listen to me, and I didn't tell, you was reporting that we had a money issue, I said there's not a money issue, because in this seven months, as you stated, if this council took responsibility of doubling almost our general fund account every month in the past six months since we've been here. So no, there was never a statement made that the town of Latah police officers are resigning because of the lack of money?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Ashley, this is what I'm saying, but now you're making a statement, this is the next person, so I'll let you go.
I just want to say that, even in 2014, and in our previous last election, both of those elections, state laws say that any person can have someone registered. When it comes to absentee, myself, because I was a candidate, I could not deal with absentee. But if I was not a candidate, I myself could have took in a hundred absentee's and turned in, if that's what I, that was the law at that time. No one wrote a law. Now, a new law says that only my absentee and five other absentee ballots for myself, which would be a total of six, can turn in at one time. You see what I'm saying? So that, that situation, it won't be back in, you get what I'm saying? So people take, you know, then the military, you know, how they're going to do it. But no one wrote the law, there was no harvesting at all, you know what I mean? I myself was in that election, I was very hurt by that, the citizens worked hard. I'm talking about, we was out there every day, seven days a week, making people aware of what's going on, and we were just in one official town throughout the entire, okay? Everybody going to check, we have absentee ballots all throughout the town, but each thing, and McIntyre, Jared Taylor, everybody received absentee ballots, okay? So, no one turned those absentee ballots in, okay? No one. So it was not written in the law, so it was okay for everyone to do it at that time.
I think this is one of the VDCs, you're trying to get such a monitoring of our town here, because we would try to have a complete agenda, and we'll bring it and put it forth, but then we can't keep one simple agenda like we have before. I think we're sharing that I can care less about whether or not we care about anything, we do care about what's going on in the town. I think we should focus in more on like resignation of the police officers and what's going on. So I would like to just ask a couple of questions to just direct, yes, no question, I am interested in the various comment, it will not cost the town any money for help from the sheriff's department to come over for help while we're waiting to hire your officers, just yes or no?
No, sir.
Okay. My next question is, were we happy with the performance of the police officers that resigned?
Yes, sir.
So me and my employment, I have about ninety employees under me, and anytime one of those employees, and this gets back to another comment, I can, I can get resignation letters, the first, if it's a valuable employee, it should be the first thing, I would say, hey, let's sit down and let's talk about this. I value you, I value your input, what can I do to make you reconsider? I know we said there was a lack of communication, but we never really said what that lack of communication was. So my question is, can we just say, hey, this was a lack of communication, just put it right out there, and then was that conversation had? Hey, what can we do to get you to say? And then my last question, the bottom line is, those police officers that had turned their resignation, will they be eligible for rehire? Or will they be considered for rehire, even though they turned their resignation?
When I said lack of communication, that communication was not because there was no communication. Every day, I went to the police department, I went to every, every department, and I said, "How are things going? Is there anything I can do?" The lack of communication came when the police officers chose not to talk to me. They chose not to tell me what the problem was, and they went off what others were saying. They viewed what someone else was saying, when it came up about the money. No one ever asked me, "Is there a money problem?" No one asked any council, "Was there a problem?" The door was always open. "Is everything okay? How can we help you? How are you on the street? How are the vehicles?" That communication was always open. Lack of communication came when officers chose not to communicate what was going on. That is the problem with Kathy, as I stated. I always went over there and I spoke, but Ms. Kathy just never felt comfortable enough to tell me, "Well, Ms. Melinda, you hadn't said anything." It wasn't that I had opened the door, it was that Ms. Kathy just chose not to say anything because of how she felt. It wasn't because that door was never open. As far as officers, I have spoken with some officers that have resigned, and I have offered to ask them, "Would they be willing to stay?" They told me no.
Yes, ma'am.
But they wouldn't be able to rehire, wouldn't overlook that, those officers?
I would not overlook that, I would not, because there was no problem on my part, on their job performance, I didn't see a problem.
I have one comment about.
Those are parts.
I was under the impression that if you have to have an absentee ballot, the only thing to do is to put it in boxes, put it in labels. You can just give it to people, let them. That doesn't seem to be a problem.
Well, we have a voter, we have a voter registration group that was working on registration, so I will ask Mr. Norris to answer that for you, because there was an actual group that was working with, getting people registered to vote.
My name is Norris Baramack, I'm part of the Department of Safe Security and Data, the Data Voter Registration Board. And the goal of the Data Voter Registration Board is to get citizens in line to register to vote. In some instances, that means people, a lot of cases, what it means is that people that were registered, they would fill out the forms, okay? Sign them, we would seal them up, that form comes, and then I provided to seal that, that, that voter registration form. We would then put that in a box, and we would, we had the authority, because it was sealed and the present registrar had already signed it, we had the authority, not the voter registration citizens or any citizens would have the opportunity to take that ballot ourselves to the voter administration office there in Dublin, and it would be a valid vote. So there is no law that says that it's a sealed ballot, anybody's got, anybody can deliver that vote, that ballot, to the voter registration office there.
Is that just in my?
That's, I can't speak for the, the laws of all states, because that's what people here, it's not safe. Yeah, it is all. So that, so if you have a friend, anyone who's registered to vote, anyone that you knew, and you picked, picked the registration form, it was sealed, you could actually take that to the voter registration office for you. So that's something that anyone, by the way, we are looking for volunteers, volunteers that are ready to.
I want to ensure the citizens of town of Latah, that you will be protected by the
police department or the sheriff's department. I know some of our citizens have approached me about, they feel bad about not being protected because of the lack of police. But I had a long conversation the other day with Officer Zane Bryant, I was in the chief, and he was, I was very encouraged by what he said, and I feel good about the situation going forward, and I would like the citizens to have anything to worry about, and we will get this straightened out once and for all, one way or the other, as things move forward. And I want the citizens not be concerned that you are well protected and will be protected.
One more thing, let me hear that quick, please. So the day that I showed up at the town hall, I have just mentioned it on Facebook, I know Dr. Robinson said if you don't do Facebook, but somebody on the town hall council had gotten word of that, because you closed down at the time I was supposed to be there. That's not warm and welcoming, that's not respectful. I'm a fifty-year-old grandmother with medical conditions sitting out when there's like heated fire waiting to meet the people that are supposed to represent me, and I come to not only a closed door, where you were actually letting people come in, I saw people come in, that's been reported, but also the police department was there, not because they were informed, even though they're in the same building. Somebody amongst you called the sheriff, they're on the dill, and then they got moved to the police department, so so much trouble with communication. Meanwhile, the police are there, Draw, Mr. Drawman here was there to talk to me, but it was critics from me. And I'm a new citizen here, who's, by the way, not unregistered vote, but everybody in my house is, and that's the kind of reading that we get? Now, I know that as a social worker, one of the things that people look to is how does crime and safety in a community when considering relocating? And right now, we're not looking. We're looking pretty bad, and I know we're getting reassurances, but I think when I called the police department, they were there two seconds, because they're right down the street. How long's it going to take to shoot you? How long's it going to take? Maybe I'm going to be shot. The day I started posting?
Excuse me, excuse me.
The day I started to talk, my daughter's tired, and my son-in-law's tired, poor slash, and my mom. I have completely slipped on the camera, so anyone thinking they might want to do that, but that's not, that's not, I have been saying, and I hope that you don't think that. So I tried to call, to please explain to me why you didn't make me feel normal. So why did I not vote? I'm not even ready to give you. It's not funny either. What's your name? Mr. Apple. Mr. Apple knows me. So, I'm not a terrible citizen, I'm afraid of it. I think that we have a question, and we have the doors locked.
Are you the same, are you the same lady that I spoke with in Walmart?
Yes, you know, and I may have heard that how there's only communication from you but not the police. And I think that's disrespectful, and I may have heard that, since then, she's been arguing.
She's trying to ask you, Ms. Apple, sir.
Ms. Apple, I have a question. I'm, I'm, when I spoke. I'm, I'm, when I spoke to you in Walmart today, um, I'm getting this, because you was very pleasant.
Oh, you were so pleasant.
Okay, you were very pleasant, um, and for some reason, you...
And you didn't want to start with me.
Please, if you want to answer your question, please allow us to answer your question, and then after you, Mr. County Councilor, after, after which you answer that question, we will move on to the agenda, because we're not gonna go back and forth, because science is in the future.
Of course.
So, so, when you spoke to me, I had no idea who you were. Apparently, you knew who I was, how...
I haven't seen your face, I don't know your...
Ma'am?
I said, I haven't seen your face, I don't know your...
You saw my face where?
At Walmart, I don't know your name. I haven't seen your face, I've met one of you.
You met another man?
Man, I'm not your customer, I wanted to say hello.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I mean, very kindly, you spoke very kindly, um, and I'm pretending something totally different registered, registered. But remember that, you, you're speaking on Friday, right? Friday, you was at the town hall?
Thursday.
Thursday? And it was...
Well, it was Friday, yes, Friday.
Okay. So it was...
It was Thursday, what happened?
It's Thursday? It was Thursday?
Yes.
And it was to speak to council?
I had a question, I had a question for council.
Oh, so, so you was at the gazebo?
No, I was out being alarmed. I went out to the door. I have a video of me when I opened the door, you were closed. From, you were, you were usually closed from 12:01, but you were closed that day until 2:00, in hopes that I left, but I'm not leaving.
And so are you, also, you're saying that the town hall was closed because of you?
And I saw the police and the sheriff there. Yes, I was told that, from the police and the sheriff.
We're sorry that you felt that way, but that's normal, ma'am.
Oh, yes, that's what I was told by the...
Okay, thank you so much, we're so sorry.
Thank you. I'm seeing that.
Thank you.
I am disappointed with Ms. Thrasher, because at the unity prayer, I spoke with Ms. Thrasher. She was very nice to me. She asked me why...
Ms. Thrasher, please let her answer, we allow her to talk, that's all her accent. Like, this going back and forth, we're not gonna go back and forth, we're gonna respect you to respect, and you're gonna respect us to respect, and then we're gonna be done, that's it. We're not gonna go back and forth with you, you're a citizen. We appreciate you, we love you, but please show us the same respect.
As I was saying, I spoke with Ms. Thrasher at the unity prayer, for the citizens, she was very cordial to me. Ms. Thrasher asked me about the closing. We discussed the closing. I did not get any of this from her or her husband. She told me how many people lived in her house. We had a great conversation. I felt I answered her question. What she stood up and said just now was nothing that I received. It was nothing. Now, Ms. Thrasher said, she didn't tell me anything about her tires being slashed. Ms. Thrasher, the reason the town hall was closed was because I didn't want ladies to be put in a situation that was dangerous for them. Why do you say that? Because my family has been put in a situation where I've been threatened because of the Facebook. I have made police reports, and the police, some have not supported me. So I yet still never came in here, never not spoke to anyone. I was running at my house. So when you say your tires were slashed, I hope you made a report, because I did. Um, if you chose not to do that, ma'am, that was your choice. I made a report. Yes, my family was threatened. No, I have never went public with it. But what I will say, I am still gonna stand. I am still gonna stand. My husband is here today, and I appreciate that. He would not be here, because I want him to stay calm, because it's not right for someone to come on your land and say the things that were said to me. Facebook has done very much harm to me and my family. My daughter, who's not involved in this, her page has been stopped. Someone placed her picture with me and had made the comments under it. No, ma'am, no, ma'am. I yet, no, sorry. I yet will continue to stand. I am, I welcome you to everything. I love everybody. I know people say prayer and government don't go together, but that's who I am. I have never lied to anybody, and if I said something, I'm woman enough to come to you and apologize. But Ms. Thrasher, today, when you talked to me, you said, "Mm-hmm," that, or it could have been handled. Everything you asked me, I answered. Everything I asked, everything you asked me, I answered. At this time, yes, I've been to the solicitor's office. Yes, I have been asked to call and slay it. But because I love Lada, I did not want this to become a black and white thing. Even though, on the line that I'm sitting in the room, it is. It's because, it is, it is because change has come, and some don't like it, I'm not gonna say everybody, because I'm not gonna be seen that way by everyone, but the ones that don't like it, you have been very loud, you have been very clear on how you feel, and at this time, I'm gonna tell you, it's okay. You have the right to be who you are, and I have the right to be who I am. You have the right to shake your head. You have the right to support me. You have the right not to support me. Those of you that have called out Mr. Kevin Drawl for doing, talking for me, he doesn't talk for me. He doesn't talk for me. Mr. Kevin and I have been on the road outside, because he was very rude to me. As a woman, I did not appreciate the things he said about me on Facebook, but he was man enough to call my phone and talk to me. So if, once again, I am open, I am available, and those of you that are wondering about the grievance for Mr. Jason, well, Mr. Jason did not reach out to me, as it is shown in his grievance. He sent an email, he did not include me. He did not include me. So when you asked him, Ms. Melinda, why didn't you give him a grievance? He didn't ask me. My name was not included. So when you go out and you say things, please tell the truth. Please tell the truth. And that's all I have to say. And I hope I did it in a respectful way, and if some of you felt I got loud, I apologize, but you will not act like you're the only ones that have an issue, because there are a lot of issues going on that none of you know about, but yet we continue to go on because we stand for Lada. I love Lada. I'm not out here criticizing Lada. I'm not out here rebuking Lada. I'm not here putting Lada on every post in the name of Lada. I am doing the best of my ability. It may not be Mr. Taylor's, he was awesome at what he did, but he did it alone. I'm not trying to do it alone. So therefore, I do contact everyone before I make decisions. That's the way I start it, that's the way I choose to finish.
That's right now.
And at this time, Ms. Rebecca's leaving, because she has something to do with her children, it's not because she doesn't agree with what we're doing.
So you bought my grievance or not the top part? Can you contact Ms. Melinda about your grievance? Because we're not gonna...
Sorry, cannot contact her. She sent me, it's based on their, I cannot contact her. Hence, the real by she was buying that email about the rest of y'all work. And if you're reading the handbook, obviously, y'all don't have a copy of it. The handbook says, she hasn't contacted town clerk.
And then it also says that your two supervisors, if they did not respond within ten days, they're gonna say...
And they don't have to, you better be back. And then I had that appeal, that your town clerk could sit down and have a conversation with you about it, and then you turn it into her. I mean, I can, I've already written them, they're from, they've been seen. Have I not been?
Thank you, sir. So that's what, was just...
I mean, I don't have to argue about it.
No, no, I don't wanna argue about it, that's what I was just saying. It's fine, I guess...
The real by she was buying that email, that was a group of seven members, town clerk and six councilmembers, was, and I would see that in these papers, that I have never been a reporter. I don't, I didn't have to go to a reporter. I, I don't know why I gotta read these papers, they didn't do. Because if it, if it was me that went on about these, she got a ringtone. If you really like...
Y'all, hey, y'all, we, hey, that's, we're, we're not gonna discuss what, whether Melinda's not a reporter or not. The grievance part, if you can call Ms. Rebecca, Ms. Rebecca, she will call you tomorrow on Monday about the grievance, not to discuss your grievance in the open, if everybody will do that. That's, I think I see you there, that's, that's, that's it, really, say bye. Well, that, well, that's it, Jason, thank you.
Hold up, because I did have an email from you, Marcus.
I said, "Me and Joe."
To Melinda.
And we replied to it, "Me and Joe, me and I."
And she went forward and said, "Melinda."
And it, and it had an email, and we knocked that, and I, I know, I heard y'all didn't say we were... I got it all ready, so, yes, sir. So I guess y'all, I guess you think it's okay for certain people to be disrespectful in the meetings. This citizen here just spoke and said that we should be on task about the police issues, but it's okay when certain folks get up and just be disrespectful to the council, but then...
I'll take the whole, I'll take the whole thing to the ground, my... And I am not disrespectful, y'all, I'm good. Ms. Brady, where you is?
I am ready. I'm definitely concerned about our town, because we are a town without a mayor, a town without a full council, a town without a police chief, a town without enough officers, and we're a town without a attorney. Something needs to be done, and it needs to get started right now. Any of these grievances that you have, please come, if you would, on an individual basis, so we can conduct the town meeting as it should. I'm sure somebody will be there, hopefully, so that they can answer your questions. There are no offices for anybody there. The administrators never have an office there. The mayor has no office there. So we, all the person you had to talk to, the clerk that could not read it, speak for the council. So let's all of us come together and be a town, and let's move on and do something and get things started. We need to, we need to take care of our business right now. I'm getting a little excited.
I want to be clear, that the fact that I'll give everybody in here a minute, that I took the deal, and I took the deal with the... They tried to switch it up, and let you believe what I'm saying. But I thought it absurd about the election. I was here at the last county meeting, and what the lawyer was, um, was asked about, she's working with the, the, the state, um, election commission people, and had studied it, and said, there's no exact law that would speak to our situation here. But the state, the state Supreme Court has offered three opinions that a no vote election would not be, right, so there's, there's no law, but the Supreme Court's interpretation of the law that were there, there are opinions. And I didn't understand it, because immediately, after she said, "I know, Marcus, you said, but my opinion is that there's no law, that my opinion is, we all start, you know, guys, you made it, you made it emotional." And thirty seconds later, it's decided. And I thought, holy Michael, this is just setting us up for another, another first down the line with the election people. You can't ignore the law. And I, I, I respect you, you know I like you, I appreciate you, I can't every time I see you, but I, I, I respect your opinions, most sad to respect the Supreme Court's opinions, yes, sir. Have you all, since you made that decision, have you all, uh, uh, who have you checked it out with besides your opinions? Have you had legal, um, um...
I'm a counsel, yes.
I'm a legal practitioner. You come to me and say, look, my child said, and I say, well, this is what I think is, and this is what we're all gonna do. And you say, well, I don't think that's what we're all gonna do. Then your child had the food for a doctor. If, when you say, my opinion is, I don't care what the Supreme Court opinion is, my opinion is, listen, and honestly, God is thirty seconds later, would look, be offended on it, and, um, I didn't understand that, of where we're gonna go forward with that, or what we're gonna go forward with that. It, it didn't make much sense to me. I respect you, I like you all, I'd often, uh, make sure each other, you got the good pictures of candidates at night, you talk to me, it's worth it. You may allow me to shoot before you get one. I thank you very much for your...
Your my opinion is, everybody's gonna push back towards about race or whatever, but I was telling how to do, look, the only time you hear something about Lada that's good is following everything, everything else, I'm gonna use about something going on, wrong all the time. We didn't think just wrong, but worried about race and go on and take care of problems we got, you know? But that's all I'm saying, you hear about Lada as good as that's all there is. And I love Lada, but I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna tell you that every, or how many of you're listening, Lada's boss, I'm always something on you. And people get no thanks, we're spreading that, looking worse. So we didn't get to get on them, and they talk, you know? And they go back and forth, and there's always something, and then we're like, yes, you be.
I just want to thank all you citizens for coming out to this call, you know, today, to get a bit of understanding of what's going on with the vote, um, the vote of the resignation of council members, the town, and the police departments. We've heard many concerns, um, and as a right for you citizens, you have that right to make concerns, and we have that right to answer those concerns, or best that we can get those precious as we possibly can. We're not gonna cross every tree, we're not gonna die every eye. Purpose of it is to try to handle town business in America, and which presents us to represent you guys. That's what we're looking for, to keep moving forward. I spoke with Zane, I had a real heart-to-heart to talk to Zane. I'm more than confident that Zane can step in as interim chief and move the police department forward. This is not our first time in this situation. Last year, we was at the same point, Eric Poprock left and took four offices with him. We was at this rebuilding site, we rebuilt, we revealed, and Lada is stronger than that. We're a Black and Brown, Black and Brown, and we're gonna move it forward, and we're gonna keep moving forward. Yes, stubborn blocks come, but before, before the sunshine and rain is falling, they'll show. So we're gonna pick up together, continue to trust us. If you don't trust us, find us and reach out to us, most of you who are on Facebook making a comment, if you went to school with me, you saw some of your classes, you know me. You can call me, you can text me, you can do what you used to do, inbox me, you can shake my hand on CBA IG, we can have a good conversation, we can move forward, we can agree to disagree and keep on moving. I love each, each and every one of you, and I bid you Godspeed. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Marcus, what is your plan for the council to decide this morning?
I think a lot of us, everybody, I got, I got, well, me and Bear Bremer, we went on Tuesday to, uh, see Suzie at the voter registration office. Um, and Suzie said that we, we had to file the election to have a date set for thirteen Tuesdays from there, the date of resignation. So we resigned two months ago, so that started that time the next Tuesday, so that Tuesday would officially be October 11th. Ms. Melinda worked with Ms. Rebecca to get that situated. We also talked about the mayor race with Ms. Suzie that day as well, right there. During that time, Ms. Suzie told us, from her mouth, to hold on scheduling the mayor's election, because she has not received paperwork from the state, from, uh, the opposing attorney or county attorney with that letter in her hand yet to move forward on that, but if it does come in this week, that election will be scheduled for September the thirteenth.
Can you check that, when, that, with, hmm?
She, she said that...
Is that your opinion?
No, no, that's Ms. Suzie, I'm sorry, I'm bad. That's, that's Ms. Suzie, we talked to Ms. Suzie and Dylan.
She's the red ball.
At the voter registration office. So if it does move forward, she gets that paperwork, she, she called Mr. Copper on Thursday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, she got... Ms. Melinda just said she was in for late Friday, that she got... Ms. Melinda just said she was in for late Friday, and she got it on Friday. So therefore, I guess tomorrow, I can go back, or maybe Ms. Brayden can go back, and we can get that arranged for September thirteenth, so that way people can start coming in to apply for the mayor position.
You got a plan?
Yeah, she got it. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Any discussion? All of you?
Aye.
Aye.